Please stand for the Fledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic where this stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is the Board of Commissioners meeting on March 13th, 2018. We'll move right into the consent agenda. We have approval of minutes for January 30th, February 13th, February 15th, and March 1st, 2018. Approval of payroll for February 17th and March 3rd, 2018. Approval of claims, February 15th, February 22nd, and March 1st, and March 8th of 2018. Treasurer's monthly report, January 31st, 2018. Waits and measures report, January 16th to February 15th, 2018. And then our comp time report is also part of this document, too. And with that, I will do, and then we also have Memorial Opera House. We have an agreement, Don Parker, artistic service agreement, and Andrew Snyder, artistic service agreement, and that will open up the floor for the consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second. We have a motion and a second for the consent agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. At this time, we'd like to move to the announcements. I think all of you are pretty well aware, if you're not, you will be shortly. Over the last three weeks, the county has experienced quite a bit of flooding. It has been a record event. We have been deployed, our stormwater, highway, all the different hands on deck, EMA, have all been involved in this. And I would just like to take this opportunity to thank Mike Novotny, the county engineer, Andy McKay, and all the guys in the highway department. We have Rich Spicer, Rich over here is one of our field project super managers and has been down there. We have Chelsea, who's new, a junior engineer in the stormwater department. Bob Thompson, who's also head of stormwater and plane commission. Commissioner Blaney has been down there quite a bit. And we just wanted to take this opportunity to thank everybody. We went over all this in our stormwater meeting before this meeting this morning. It was quite extensive. We're still out assessing damage. We can't assess a lot of the damage until the water recedes, especially on bridges, because you've got to be able to look under bridges, not on top of them. So we've already identified a couple of bridges that have failed. We still have some roads underwater out there, and we're just now waiting for the water to recede. But it's been all hands on deck. These folks have worked tirelessly, they've worked through the weekends. It's a very high stressful situation. You have people in danger, you have people in flooding situations of their homes. It's very emotional, it's very personal. And I just want to, I just want to thank our staff and our people here at county government, Lance Bella and EMA, and Lance is a new person in EMA for us. He's only been with us for about a month and a half, two months now. So we're all coming together, we're all working together, the communication has been great. There's been a lot of takeaways, we've learned a lot of things. But again, I would just like to thank you all for being there and putting the time in and being there in a time of assistance and need, and I just want to thank you for that. I don't know if any of the other commissioners have anything to say, Jim or Laura, but...
Echo your statement. It was a rough deal down there for a lot of citizens, and our people really stepped up and helped out and made the best they could of a not-so-great situation. We've got a few things that we can make better next time, if there is a next time, hopefully not, and we plan to work on that, but overall, proud of our people.
Yep. Also, just one other point that I think, was it eight days ago, we declared an emergency for Porter County? That will allow us to access federal funds, not only for the county, but for also people who have been hurt on this situation. We've put the information out on the social media and everywhere possible to let people know what they have to do to contact, to fill out these claims. We're still assessing ours, and we don't know the total significant dollar amount yet, but we're working on it frantically. So, once again, thank you. With that, we'll now move to the commissioners' part of the agenda. First up on the list, we have Gary Up Construction. This is payment application number five, in the amount of $93,812.50 for the admin plaza renovation. We have a balance due of around $111,424.45, and I will open that up to the floor.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any questions, comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign, motion carries. We will now move into KBIC Consulting, and this is the property and casualty fiduciary agenda for 2018. So what do we want to do here on that? Yeah? What is it? Is there? Oh, so this is their contract for KBIC Consulting, okay. Is that similar to our last contract? This is just an extension of the '17 contract. Correct. KBIC Consulting is our property and casualty provider for, consultant for the county's insurance. This would give their service agreement for another year. Open that up to the floor.
Is it 10 months? Why do we have it for 10 months?
Probably just to get us through the end of the year, right?
Yeah, it has to do with the renewals of the insurance.
Yeah. It's tied to the new renewals, right? We're changing that out.
Motion to approve.
I'll second that. We have a KBIC. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign, motion carries. We'll now move to health insurance. As you all know, our last meeting, the county and the Board of Commissioners has moved on moving the county's health insurance to a new provider. Part of this will also be moving the dental program under the health insurance. This is with Delta Dental. This was discussed at length in our last meeting when we made these decisions. This is now, Delta Dental was approved by the county. In theory, this is now, we're moving into approving the contract for Delta Dental. So with that, any questions from the Board of Commissioners?
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second for the health insurance, for the dental contract for Porter County Government for Delta Dental. All of those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Next on the agenda is for the health insurance. This is for Tokio Marine. This is our stop-loss proposal for Porter County Government, and this is for our health insurance, so we will continue with the stop-loss.
And we voted on this last week, too.
And this is in concept, we voted for it, too. This is just now the contract.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second for Tokio Marine for the stop-loss proposal provider for Porter County Government's health insurance. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Now, we're going to move next into, this is for American Structure Point. As you recall, at the last meeting, we had accepted some proposals from American Structure Point. This is now the actual contracts. The first one is the North County Complex Design. I think, I don't, did we, no, we announced that at the council meeting, didn't we? That's when we announced it.
We've approved at our last meeting the proposal for the North County Complex. This is the follow-up for the contract, and then the next one would be...
It would be for the amendment, okay. So this, the first one is for the North County Complex Design Contract, and we accepted the proposal at the last meeting. This is now moving toward the contract again.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second for North County Complex Design Contract with American Structure Point. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Number two on this for Structure Point is an amendment, number one, for the North County Complex. And you want to discuss the amendment, Scott?
The amendment is to add an additional building on the property in Portage. This would be, at this point, 11,500 square foot building. That would be dual-purpose for the county and for the township. From the county perspective, it would be the county health department up in the north part of the county, the assessor's office, and also the community room. And then from the township's perspective, it would be the township trustee's offices along with a permanent location for the Portage Food Pantry. So this design contract is an amendment to add the, for Structure Point to design what I'm calling the outbuilding, which is roughly 11,500 square foot.
Yep.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second for amendment number one for the North County Complex. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Just as a point of reference, on the outbuilding up in Portage, we are also, while we're working towards getting the building figured out and built, we've also been meeting with the Portage Township Trustee, and we've also been working on an MOU between the county and Portage Township on taking care of the ground. So we always have building things, well then you're handed it off to take care of it. And Portage Township obviously has a presence up there. I know for our buildings facilities team here, it's sometimes very difficult to get up to Portage, while we're taking care of everything around the center part of the county. So we're now going to be working out an agreement with Portage Township to where they'll be helping us with snow plowing, we'll be doing, sharing services from a maintenance standpoint. So I think, overall, I think there's going to be a lot of, some savings there, but on the other hand, I think we're going to have boots on the ground and the right people being able to take care of these things without stretching our service group to the nth degree. So we're very excited about that, I know Portage Township is, too, but again, it's just another way of, we're trying to work together with other units of government here to come up and create more efficiencies for the citizens and the burden on the county. Moving into number six, we have the capital improvement, North County Complex Soil Borings. In our agreement with Stillman Corporation, we have, they would be handling certain off-architectural needs within the Structure Point contract, so we'll be bringing these through here from time to time. The first one that we have is, obviously, we need to get soil borings done out there so we know how we're going to design these buildings. We have three quotes, and as you can see, we have Alton Whitsick Engineering for $5,680, KNS Engineering for $7,800, and then we have ATC for $8,450, and we need to move on this.
I'll make a motion for Alton Whitsick Engineering, Inc. at $5,680.
Second. We have a motion and a second for Alton Whitsick Engineering, Inc. for the North County Complex Soil Borings. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign, motion carries. We have cell phone policy animal shelter. I think that's just...
That's just to formalize the people that will be getting cell phone reimbursement at the animal shelter, brings them in line with the other county departments as far as the department head and the, and this is for the animal control officers themselves.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second for the cellular phone policy for the animal shelter and animal control. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Okay, next on there, we have Lance Bella, or I guess we have Mike, yeah, you're Mike Brickner, Public Safety Director Mike Brickner, shooting in for Lance Bella. Morning. The first one on the docket here, this is second reading. As you recall, at the last meeting, we went through the public hearing portion. This is an ordinance establishing a non-reverting fund for the receipt of charitable donations for the Porter County Emergency Management Agency, and this is second reading. I will open up the floor.
Motion to approve ordinance establishing a non-reverting fund for the receipt of charitable donations for the Porter County EMA on second reading.
Second. We have a motion and a second for an ordinance establishing a non-reverting fund for the receipt of charitable donations for Porter County EMA, second reading. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign, motion carries. An ordinance, number two on the agenda, is also another ordinance establishing a non-reverting fund for the Porter County EMA as the fiduciary agent of equipment and supplies used by the Indiana District One Task Force. And that's second reading also.
Move to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second for the Porter County EMA establishing a non-reverting fund as the fiduciary agent of equipment and supplies used by Indiana District One Task Force. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Thanks, Mike. Did you have some other stuff on here?
Really, I appreciate it. I did provide the board with a copy of the breakdown for the assets for District One and annual cost for your, just so you can have that as well.
Okay.
I'll keep you apprised as that moves forward with the MOUs with the other counties.
For, just for discussion purposes here and informational purposes, our EMA Emergency Management Association we have in Porter County, but Porter County's EMA is also part of a district EMA, which is District One. And in the past, districts have different counties, and the district have shared things and have shared equipment, move stuff around from time to time. It was all pretty informal, and when we had a changeover in personnel at our EMA, we wanted to get our arms around it and take an inventory, see what all we had, and now we've approached District One and said, you know, as we're going to be using each other county's equipment and other things, we need to have agreements in place that who's supposed to take care of it, who's supposed to do certain things. And that's really what all this is. This is just a formalization of our county with our district, and we feel a lot better. And I know when they were all approached, they were, they were okay with it, too, so...
Yes.
Long overdue. So, thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Have a great day. Next on the list, we have Sheriff Reynolds, or the Sheriff's Department. Looks like that's Edie. Hi, Edie.
Morning.
How you doing?
Good. Sheriff and chief are at a school, a commission's meeting, so they couldn't come today.
No worries. First on the agenda, we have Colleen Doherty, a six-month contract for support analyst. The contract is in conjunction with the Lake County Highway Intensity Drug Trafficking Area for the heroin overdose project.
Correct. This is the same contract we've had, but we did increase her hours to 40. They pay for half and we pay for half. Not a full-time employee at all, just to get her up to...
And not an employee of either.
Not an employee, yes.
Right.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second for a six-month contract for support analyst for Colleen Doherty. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Next on is a Hobart, this is a service agreement for the jail kitchen equipment. That's pretty self-explanatory, I think.
Dishwasher.
Dishwasher.
Which was for us a few years back.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second for services agreement for the dishwasher in the jail. This is a service agreement for Hobart. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign, motion carries. And then we have South Point Partners. This is a rental agreement for the sheriff's drug task force. The rental cost would be reimbursed by the Lake County High Intensity Drug Trafficking Area. Is this a, is this a continuation of their...
Yeah, oh, yeah, they've been there for a while.
Yeah.
Way before we took them and...
And this is for an additional two years, for 18, for 18 and 19.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second for a rental agreement for the sheriff's drug task force between South Point Partners. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Thank you, Edie.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
You, too.
Next up, we have Treasurer Michelle Tlancy. Morning, Michelle.
Good morning.
This is for the Masters Touch LLC Tax Statement Printing and Mail Processing Agreement.
Right, we've been with them for quite a few years now. They've kept the costs the same to us. They're providing great service. We have the eNotice going, it kind of builds a little bit every year, which then reduces the cost of the bill print and mail, so it's been working really good.
Good.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second for Masters Touch LLC. This is a tax statement printing and mail processing agreement for the treasurer's office. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Thank you, Michelle. See you at 1:00.
Okay.
Yep. Expo Center Lori Daly. Morning, Lori. How you doing?
I'm good.
This is for Blaze. This is an annual software license, software updates and software maintenance, and this is for what?
The internal accounting that we do.
Okay.
Our ledger.
And the contracts for $1,780 for the year.
Yes.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second for the Blaze Annual Software License. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Thanks, Lori. First up here is a request to approve a copier in the amount of $8,564 for 911. I believe their copier is at end-of-life. Yes.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second for a request to approve Adams Remco copier in the amount of $8,564 for 911. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Next, we have, this is to approve the maintenance agreement for that copier for 911.
Three years, what's the total amount? Do we have an annual rate or anything?
This is, it adds to our already existing maintenance contract itself, correct?
This will be, yeah, this will be paid by 911.
Right.
Yep.
But it's part of our overall umbrella of all of the maintenance contracts for all of the copper machines.
At the same rate, correct.
Which was done to be able to get them all at a lower rate.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the Adams Remco maintenance agreement for 911, and that's a three-year agreement. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Don, again. Yep. This is RSM. These are the consultants that help put the IT audit together for the county. This is a service agreement that we're going to take on for this year. This is for them to provide IT technology support services, and they're, we're putting this agreement in place. It's only billed as needed. We just, as we, as we work through our, all of our IT upgrades that we're going to be doing here in the county, and then we have some heavy lifting that we're going to be doing here this, toward the end of this year with the jail, with 911, some pretty very expensive equipment that is at end-of-life that we need to go in and update, and, you know, we're talking like million, two-million-dollar phone systems here. We want to be able to have a consultant onboard that we can talk to about the specialized equipment. We always were told that you can't really bid these type of equipment out. We're finding out that you can. There are other providers out there, but we're gonna, you know, we're just going to keep mining it, we're just going to try to keep figuring it out, and we have some really smart people there that can help us on an ad hoc basis as needed, and I think that's, I think that's a good move. So, I'll open it up to the floor.
Motion to approve the agreement with RSM.
Second. We have a motion and a second for an information technology support services agreement to RSM. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Next on the list is NITCO. This is a contract for a running fiber. If you've been coming to our meetings the last couple of years, we've been running a lot of fiber to all of our county buildings. This is an extension of that. I think this was part of the monies that were approved by the council at the, in the February meeting, right, Don?
Correct.
And so this is now, we're executing on that money that we got from the council and the general fund to upgrade our IT department over a two-year plan, and this is starting us off. So what's the amount of this contract, Don?
Well, I think we need to kind of go through it a little bit, because we kind of have partnerships a little bit with NITCO on the cost share to get this fiber run put in. So, Don, why don't you kind of elaborate on that a bit?
Yeah.
I've been talking with NITCO for the last year about running a fiber between the JDC and the admin building. They approached me about it, wanted us to go into partnership with them, and we would only pay a portion of the, of the cost of it. We're getting a 12-stan fiber that's going to be owned by Porter County, and they're going to have their own fiber in the same conduit, where they can sell their portion of it. But we have all rights to the 12 strands of fiber that they're putting in for us.
Good.
The total cost is like $73,000, and our portion will be $31,000.
Thirty more, okay.
Yeah, the total construction cost was $73,924, and then our portion of that is $31,962. And then that gives us four cents. And that gives us the day, and that gives us the fiber run that we need between the two.
Correct. There's a two-to-three-month waiting period before the construction can start, so I'm probably looking at maybe July or August before we actually get it finished.
So that'll put the juvenile detention center then on high-robust speeds, and it'll, it'll really involve in that out there.
It'll be the juvenile center and the highway department and EMA.
Oh, okay, so all of those facilities.
Yeah, I've already got fiber run between juvenile center, highway, and EMA now.
Okay. Don, one other question. The fiber work that we have to do at the North County Chesterton Garage, has that been done? Because I know they were having problems with the time clock up there not having robust Wi-Fi, right, Vicki?
Right, exactly.
And I just wanted to make sure that that's been handled. I saw the thing screwed on the wall, but I didn't see the things with the lights in it.
That's still in progress. NITCO hasn't finished the run to the building yet, but I was told by Tom Carroll that we're looking at early spring. So once the fiber gets to the building, then we can get them...
Punch it down and, okay. Thank you for the update. Next, we have on the agenda is an IT policy. Don, take us through those.
Should we approve this contract?
Oh, we didn't vote on it, I'm sorry. That is, I'm sorry, we, I'll open up the floor. Did we have a motion and a second?
No.
No, I'll open up the floor for the NITCO, my fault.
No, no problem. Motion to approve the contract with NITCO for the fiber run from the JDC to the admin building.
Second. We have a motion and a second for the contract fiber run for JDC to the admin building for NITCO. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Next is IT policy, Don.
Yeah, I've been working with HR, getting IT policies put in place. I've completed the policies that the HR needed for all of the Porter County users. She has all copies of that now, and I'm in the process now of working on the IT policies that are strictly used in the IT department, and this is the first one that I'm bringing to you.
Okay. Are there any questions of this policy from the board?
No, I'm glad you're doing it.
Yeah, this is long overdue.
Do we need to approve this?
Yes.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second for the IT policy as presented by the IT department and Don Wellsen. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign, motion carries. We'll look for more policies coming forward, Don.
Right, thank you.
Keep writing.
I will.
Thanks. Facilities Director Matt Steckley. We have, okay, yep. These are, the first on the agenda, we have, Matt has been going out looking for tilt skillets, and these are three quotes, and this is for the jail kitchen. So Matt, give us, give us what you got here.
The tilt skillets, both of them were brought over from the original jail, so we definitely have gotten our life and use out of them. We've been down to one for a while as the, one of them officially rusted out and has a hole in the burners, a flame shoot out of it. So it's, they've been operating on one, and I've been working with them and finally said it's, it's time to do it, it's a new year, a new budget, so it's, it's needed, definitely. Three quotes before you, C&amp;T Design came in the lowest. This is... This is to furnish two of them. State-of-the-art units installed everything turnkey for $31,963.58.
And your, that's your recommendation for the low?
Yeah, yeah, I looked over, yeah.
Two tilt jackets. Any questions from the board?
No. Motion to approve the low quote from CNT design at $31,963.58.
Second. We have a motion and a second for CT design, TNT design for $31,963.58. And these are for two tilt skillets for the jail kitchen that will be replaced. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Post same sign. Motion carries.
And also on regarding the jail kitchen, they've got a vendor over there that assists also with the food prep, and so I've been working with my team at the jail and that vendor to put a capital plan for the, for the jail kitchen itself. There's a lot of equipment in there, a lot of moving parts and pieces, refrigeration systems that are old and obsolete, so trying to get away from everything being a surprise and really get on top of it. So, that's something that's good that's in the works.
Okay, good. Next we have, this is moving over to the EMA building on Highway Two, when I think we mentioned earlier that we have a new EMA director. One of the first things that I said he did when he took over is he went out to the garage on Highway Two and the office out there and totally cleaned it out, took inventory, has everything organized now, has everything catalogued. One of the things that became very apparent, we have the equipment agreement now and the agreements with District One. One of the things, though, that we need to do in that building is lock down a certain area that a lot of this equipment can be locked up. And what we have here is the quotes for the fencing which are inside of that building to create a locked up area, Matt. And go ahead and elaborate on that.
This actually also includes fencing around the switchgear outside and the generator. So, it's two different types of fencing. Lance approached me with this, want some fencing, which is where the quote from Security Industries came from, and then I got involved and was able to shore up two additional quotes. All of them spec the same. I met on site with Northwest Indiana Fence themselves. So, we walked through it. Basically, it's eight-foot-high fencing outside around the generator and switchgear with barbed wire fencing. And then upstairs, the second floor, the bomb squad, the health department, there's all these different agencies that share space, storage space. And this fencing on the second floor is basically to divide that space up to where only the bomb squad can get into their stuff. It's basically making sure that everything is secure and accountable, that nothing walks. So, and Northwest Indiana Fence came in the lowest at $9,000 for both sets of fencing.
Motion to approve the quote at Northwest Indiana Fence at $9,000.
Second. We have a motion and a second for fencing at EMA for Northwest Indiana Fence at $9,000. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Post same sign. Motion carries.
Thanks.
Thanks, Matt.
Have a great day.
You too now. Next up, we have highway engineering. This is Bob Thompson, Director.
Morning.
So, first on the list, we have Robert A. Binger and Christina S. Meradian. Petition to vacate Vale Street adjacent to lots 28, 29, and Block Three in Hillcrest Park, recorded in miscellaneous record K, page 131. Take it away, Bob.
As mentioned, Hillcrest Park is south of 600 North in the Valparaiso Lakes area, and they requested a portion of Vale Street to be vacated adjacent to their lots. This is a 20-foot unimproved right-of-way going south of 600 North. They're only asking for half of the right-of-way to be added to their adjacent lots. We advertised this into the newspapers and letters were also sent out for this. This is a public hearing.
You think so? So, we open it up and then we...
Yeah, did you give your staff recommendation?
Staff recommendation, I, we looked and we called up the utility locate. We noticed from maps from Valparaiso Lake Area Conservancy District that there are no utilities running there with them, which is sewer and water. The other utility locates came out, and they say the right-of-way was clear in this area. The only thing I wasn't sure of, and I visited the site on this, was whether or not this was used by the area residents in there as a pathway going down to the lake, because there was access to the lake. I did not see any indication of that. So, based off of that, I would say recommend approve.
Okay. Well, what we're going to do here is, when we do a vacation of the street, we're going to do this in a public meeting. So, what we're going to do right now is we're going to suspend the commissioner's meeting, open up a public hearing. What we'll do here is we'll give people three opportunities to speak in favor of and to speak against this petition. So, first, what we would like to do is, first call, anybody wishing to come forward to speak against this petition? Second call, anybody wishing to come forward and speak against this petition? Third and final time, anybody wishing to come forward to speak against this petition? We will now move over to the other side. Any, first call for anybody wishing to come forward to speak in favor of this petition? Yes, please, yeah, please come up right over here, state your name. There's a...
The mic's right there.
Mic right there, yep.
That one.
Yep, yep.
Okay. I'm Christina Meradian, and my family has owned the property above the industry for over four years. And we've been responsible in maintaining it, and we were considering putting a garage in that, in that area.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for coming forward. Second call, anybody wishing to come forward in speaking in favor of this petition? Third and final call, anybody wishing to come forward to speak in fa, in favor of this petition? With that, we will close the public hearing, and we will now reopen the commissioner's meeting.
Just, just for the record, all the adjoining property owners were, were notified by certified mail, and there was also the appropriate advertisement in the paper, so...
Correct.
Notification has been done, and that was done by the petitioner.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second for a petition to vacate Vale Street adjacent to lots 28, 29, and Block Three in the Hillcrest Park subdivision for Robert A. Binger and Christina Meradian. Did I say that right this time? Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Post same sign. Motion carries. Next on the list, Bob, take, take it away.
This is another petition to vacate. This is Raymond G. Pullins and Louise, Lois, excuse me, M. Pullins Revocable Trust, Living Trust. Petition is to vacate unimproved and unnamed road right-of-way adjacent to lots one and two in Hurbert, recorded in miscellaneous record E, page 184. Hurbert, as mentioned, is on 450 South. It's a number of stripped-off lots along 450 South on this. They own all of the adjacent properties on both sides of the little segment. It just, this unimproved road wraps around the lots all along 450 South on this. The house is actually built in the right-of-way from what we are seeing, and the, and all the indications of that are. We called up the utility locates. We did not see where any utilities are running in this area due to the house, and they marked clear on this. Certified letters were issued to the adjacent lot owners. Also, it was advertised in the local newspapers. Staff recommendation is to approve.
Okay. Thanks, Bob. Again, this, since this is a petition to vacate, we have to go through the same process we just went through. So, what I'm going to do is I'm going to, I'm going to pause the commissioner's meeting and open up a public hearing. What we'll do here again is give three opportunities either way to come forward and speak in favor or against this petition. So, with that, first thing we'd like to do is anybody wishing to speak against this petition, please come forward, give your name and address. Second call, anybody wishing to come forward to speak against this petition? Third and final time, anybody wishing to come forward to speak against this petition? We'll now move over, first call for anybody wishing to speak in favor of this ordinance. Please state your name and address, and we'll go from there.
Morning, ladies and gentlemen. My name's Christian Bartholomew. I'm an attorney for the petitioner. Essentially, I think that the, the facts have been laid out pretty well. This is a 45-foot strip of land that runs between two parcels that my clients already own. Notably, this, this piece of, this right-of-way has not been in use. I think it was platted back in the late 1800s. Nobody ever did anything with it. At the other end of the numerous parcels within the right-of-way, the right-of-way has already been vacated in other places. Given the fact that it's pretty much unusable, and my, my clients do have a structure in the middle of the right-of-way right now, we would just ask that the commission approve it.
Thank you. Second opportunity, anybody wishing to come forward in speaking in favor of this petition? Third and final time, anybody wishing to come forward to speak in favor of this petition? And we will now close the public hearing and reopen the commissioner's meeting, and I will open it to the floor, to the board. Any comments, questions?
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second to improve a petition to vacate unimproved and unnamed road right-of-way of adjacent to lots one and two in Hurbert subdivision, recorded in miscellaneous records, E, page 184, for Raymond and Lois Pullins, Raymond G. Pullins and Lois M. Pullins Revocable Living Trust. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Post same sign. Motion carries. Thanks. Thank you. Next, Bob, we got aye dot. Take it.
Endot. This is the LPA agreement for our county-wide bridge inspection and inventory program that we have. This is for the cycle years of 2018 through 2021, four-year period. This is the agreement, as mentioned, between Endot and the county commissioner, so that way Endot can open up a PO for allowing us to receive the 80% reimbursement...
Yep.
...for the program.
We want that. Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second for the LPA agreement for county-wide bridge inspection and inventory program for the cycle years of 2018 through 2021. This is for Endot. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Post same sign. Motion carries. And next, USI consultants, Bob.
This is for Bridge 126. This is part of the capital improvement plan. On this bridge, our consultant, USI, presented some preliminary plans to Mike Novati and I on some alternatives. The alternative that Mike and I chose was essentially to, was a good alternative in that sense where the lifespan of the bridge is going to be far greater than the concrete box beams that are in there now. We were trying to avoid purchasing right-of-way on these bridges, but with this and proper design, we are going to have to purchase a little bit of right-of-way for this, everything. And we felt it was important on this, so therefore we're asking USI to present an agreement on this for additional purchase of right-of-way.
And 126 Bridge is where again?
This is on 700 North, just east of 149. It's over the Salt Creek.
That's, okay.
And one of the things, I guess, to explain quickly why we were having to do this too is based off of the recent events and everything on this, we were presented hydraulic analysis by USI, and from going out in the field, Mike Novati and I both noticed that the water, floodwater, while it was taken under the bridge all right, it was still in the middle of the beams. So, we're asking them to raise that bridge up a little bit so that there is no obstruction.
Okay. Does the number of pilasters holding up the bridge, has that been reduced at all? Is that the same design?
It's, probably if anything, it's going to be widened a little bit so we can get it out of the stream. It's going to be a total clear span over the bridge. There are not going to be any piers within the stream...
Good.
...from what we saw with the original design.
Okay, good.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second for USI consultants, such as supplemental agreement for the right-of-way services for Bridge 126. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Post same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Bob. Next, we'll move right into your next thing here. UDO, Unified Development Ordinance Amendment. This is Chapter Four, and this is the Plan Unit Development Districts. This is a first reading, and take it away.
Plan Commission, at their last public hearing, voted 6-0 to forward this to the county commissioners with a recommendation of approval. Essentially, what this amendment does is allows some flexibility with the size of the parcel that a developer can go forward with, with doing a UDO. Currently, right now, it's very strict with the policy. It has to meet certain acreage requirements. What we've added is the flexibility in there to allow them to go forward with a smaller parcel of land if they meet the certain criteria laid out within the UDO. And there's four of them, I believe. The Plan Commission feels that the design and the intent of the proposal before them meets these criteria, so they can waive the size requirements. Plus, we did reduce the residential, all residential PUD requirement from 20 acres down to five acres.
And Plan Commission voted on this?
Yes, they voted on this and forwarded to the commissioners with a 6-0 recommendation for approval.
So, to be clear, we use a lot of acronyms. This is the, under our UDO, this is the PUD portion...
Plan Unit Development. Correct.
This is, this is doing a modification to the Plan Unit, Plan Unit Development standards within our Unified Development Ordinance.
Correct.
Yep. And for the benefit of everybody in the audience, we get to go through another public hearing. So, here we go. We're going to suspend the commissioner's meeting right now and open up a public hearing. This is for first reading, for Unified Development Ordinance Amendment, Chapter Four, Plan Unit Development Districts. What we're going to do is give anybody the opportunity to come forward and speak against this ordinance, first time. Second call, anybody wishing to come forward to speak against this ordinance? Third and final time, anybody wishing to come forward to speak against this ordinance? First call, anybody wishing to come forward in speaking in favor of this ordinance? Second call, anybody wishing to come forward in speaking in favor of this ordinance? Third and final time, anybody wishing to come forward to speak in favor of this ordinance? And with that, the public hearing is now closed. We will reopen the commissioner's meeting, and I will open the floor to my fellow commissioners.
Motion to approve the UDO amendment, Chapter Four, Plan Unit Development Districts, on first reading.
Second. We have a motion and a second on first reading for a UDO amendment, Unified Development Ordinance Amendment, Chapter Four. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Post same sign. Motion carries. It will be on our next agenda for the second reading. And next on the list, Bob, you got maintenance agreements for Porter Business Parks, phases one and two.
This is a little newer, so walk us through it all the way through so everybody gets what we're doing.
Okay.
We've changed our maintenance agreement procedures on this. Before, we used to go forward and accept the road immediately into our inventory and have the developer file a maintenance, two-year maintenance agreement with the county commissioners. We're following, now that we've acquired highway engineering up there, Mike Novati and I said, I want to work this out, we're following the Unified Development Ordinance requirements where, on this is, it's a three-year period that we're agreeing to do maintenance on these roads, such as snow plowing on it. Very limited maintenance. The developer is still going to be responsible for any major infrastructure requirements and everything like this. It's sort of, I want to say, an observation period. We're making sure that this infrastructure is going to be good within the three-year period on this. So, it's just a maintenance agreement. We're watching it. We're agreeing to snow plow it, do limited on this. After the three-year period, then we come back in and we start going through the procedure to actually accept the roads into the system. We'll review the infrastructure again to make sure it has met the requirements of our county codes and is functioning properly according to our county codes. And then we'll come forward with the actual acceptance on this. And then we'll come forward with the actual acceptance on this. So in this time period right now, anything that comes up, the developer is still responsible for doing the major maintenance on it. If they do not, we do have the letter of credit that's in place where we can go in and pull from this letter of credit to go in and do the maintenance on it.
So this is like the warranty period?
Yeah, exactly. I'm sorry, I was trying to think of a...
Yeah. It's a three-year warranty period before we formally accept it, and during the warranty period, there's, in this particular case, there's $246,355 letter of credit.
Correct.
If in case, if in fact there's some sort of defect in, in the roads before we officially accept them into our inventory.
Correct. Which, one of the things to mention, we will have a walkthrough at the end of this period, and any kind of crack we see in the roads that are going to have to seal properly, we're going to have to go through a step-by-step process to be able to bring it back to the commissioners again for the actual acceptance.
And to everyone out there, this is another added benefit, we feel, by having the water, stormwater department in with the highway engineering. So this is all being handled in one department. All the discussions are taking place in one department. A lot of this came as outcomes because of the stormwater management. We started seeing failures in a lot of older subdivisions, street failures on subdivisions that went belly up during the, you know, eight, nine years ago when things went, went south. I, I just want to commend the Plan Commission, Bob, your department, because this is long overdue. I think this will put a lot of onus on the developers to build those roads right the first time, and, and that's really what we want here. We've also increased some of our specifications on subdivisions, too, so hopefully 30 years from now, we're not dealing with the type of problems that we're dealing with today on 30- to 50-year-old infrastructure that's failing in a lot of these subdivisions. So we're, we, we acknowledge the problem, we addressed it, and now this is the part of fixing it. And I commend, I just commend the Plan Commission and everybody for, for working through this. This is desperately needed. So, thank you, Bob. I'll open up the floor to the commissioners for any other comments or, or questions of Bob's. Go ahead.
Two items I want to put in real quickly for Porter Business Park in this situation. We do have a hold harmless agreement on this because of the islands that are within the roadways there and some of the landscaping features that they do have. Part of the condition, too, on this, before we'll go in and actually do the plowing or the light maintenance is, is they must put in delineators, reflective delineators, so that way we can see where these landscaping features are, and the plow drivers will know.
And there was also an interplay with the stormwater, right?
Um, with the stormwater on this, we did go out and do the inspections on this. We did feel that there were some deficiencies there on that, but the stormwater is being maintained by the Damon Run Conservancy District, and the Damon Run Conservancy District accepted it, so put that in for the record.
That's their, their deal.
Okay, good clarification.
So the reflectors and so forth, that's part of this agreement, or it's something you're adding?
It's part of it. We've explained to the developer that they need it up before we'll actually go in and do any kind of plowing.
Good.
Motion to approve the maintenance agreements for Porter Business Park, phases 1 and 2.
Second. We have a motion in second for the maintenance agreements for Porter, Porter Business Park as written, phases 1 and 2. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries. Thanks, Bob.
Thank you.
All right. We got one more. Nope, this is it. Worth it. Next, David Baines, Election Board President. Hi, David.
Good morning.
Madam Clerk, how are you today?
Fine.
Good morning.
Good morning.
What we have, first on the docket is the ESS Service Agreement, First Amendment to the Agreement. David, you want to take us through it here quick, or whomever?
All right. Well, I can, I'll, I'll give a preview real quick. At our election org meeting last week, we delegated the election responsibilities to the county clerk. This was in response to the concerns by the county council. So Madam Clerk has assumed the duties and requirements of conducting the upcoming elections, and so I, I think just as a matter of form, I'm going to let her present that as part of her new responsibility in that transition. The election board will continue to, you know, monitor and approve anything. Same with our budget approvals and expenditures and so forth. They'll still be approved by the board. Some of those election responsibilities will, will be also approved by the clerk's office and any requests that she would make to, to make sure she can perform the duties of the election, so. But, so kind of give a preview, but I did want to kind of let her present that since we've done this transition.
Okay, great.
We've forwarded to your attention the First Amendment to the Agreement. What we had done was we had taken the previous agreement and just used the old terms and added on additional years since we did not purchase any new equipment. So the payment that would be due April 15th for our current equipment would be $138,276.75. We're requesting your approval for that contract for maintenance, because we will need that equipment for the election.
Yep.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion in second for the First Amendment to the ESS Services Agreement in the amount of $138,000, was it $276.75?
Correct.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries. Next, approval of polling locations.
We have forwarded to your attention the detailed accounting of the polling locations. We have 75. Each and every location has been reviewed to fall within the current structure and either have been used in a previous election or have been approved and reviewed for this election. One change we have is Boone Township, it will now be at St. Helen's Church. Otherwise, pretty much they're the same.
The same location, yeah.
Where will it be?
Pardon?
You said it's not going to be at...
No, it will be at St. Helen's.
At St. Helen's Church.
It was at the community building previously.
Okay. And then how did we figure out what we're doing with Expo?
Yes, Expo, yeah, go ahead.
Oh, no, what?
That's with the construction. They're going to move it to the other, the 4-H building it.
Correct.
Oh, okay, so they're just moving it within the...
It's a different location, but they're going to use the same building.
Okay, great, great. Glad that worked out.
Because you had some August things going on and some other things going on.
Yeah, it was just getting pretty busy there.
Yeah, so they worked with us so we could keep that same location. We're just moving it to a different building.
Okay. Any questions of the board?
Karen and Dave, I just got a couple of questions. One is, since you've been giving the responsibility of taking over the election, how, does that, what's Kathy and Sunday's role at this point?
Voter's registration.
Just voter's registration?
Correct.
Okay. Okay.
Do you have any other ones?
Nope, nope. That's good. Laura, any questions?
Motion to approve the polling locations.
I'll second it.
Sorry, Jim.
We have a motion in second for approval of original polling locations as outlined. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you for your time.
Good luck. And with that, we're at the end of our agenda. I'd like to open up the floor. Anybody wishing to address this board can come forward now. With that, this board stands in re...